This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call the Order of the Monary Select for at 6:02 PM on April 30th. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And I think we'll get right into the Lake Garfield drawdown. Jim's here to join us. Thank you, Jim. Looks like we got a diagram or a...
A lot of visual aid.
I was looking at it already.
I'll see how much you made that.
You had the guys make that?
No, I did yesterday.
Good man, you did a good job.
You made it yesterday? Yeah.
That's awesome.
You're gonna patent it? Make it a larger scale?
We have a larger scale. So those walls are, you know, ten inch thick concrete. It's like a real foundation.
Right, right.
And that's out in front of the dam, in Brewer's Pond. It extends out to Brewer Pond, so... The earthen dam is back. Yeah. The earthen dam is back this way. Right, and it covers like this. And this extends out into the Brewer Pond. This pipe actually goes out like thirty feet. Has head wall, you've got caves built over it. There's trash racks to go on here. You've got a nice steel that's open.
And you can see that when you're standing on the beach there, yeah.
When you go up on the top of the dam.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's pipe. Right concurrently, it's all underwater because the water level's that high. So when the dam's closed up tight, lake fills up and it naturally flows over. This is what controls the level of the lake. So this elevation right here, if you were to shoot it through transit, it would cross someplace over on Lake Garfield. It'd be the same elevation as that is right there. So when the gate is open, it opens from the bottom up. So it's either open or it's closed. If it opened from the top down, then you'd have the ability to lower it down to three feet and just leave it there. We don't have that luxury. So you can keep it bottom up, so it's either open or it's not. So if you wanted to maintain that three feet, like I said before, you'd have to go...
Every day?
Every day, really.
When it's raining, whatever, constantly. Okay, we've reached the three feet, close it up. Go the next day. Now we're four feet up, closing. Wherever you want to go.
But wouldn't that still be true at maintaining it at six feet? I mean, it takes a lot... So basically, you wait till it gets to six feet and then you close it?
That gate stays open while it's open all day.
That gate is a six-foot drawdown?
I'm sorry?
That gate is six feet lower than this level. So the bottom...
So the bottom of this piece of pipe is six feet lower than the top of that.
Yeah, okay.
So it stays...
So when it's fully six feet down, there's no water flowing through that?
We actually never really get to... Never really get to the full six feet by the half. There's always movement, the water runs through there. Mostly because, you know, everything that feeds the lake, you know, continues to flow year-round, you know? Unless it's a really dry year. I know one year, 2016 maybe, they didn't draw the lake all the way down. And they just, they put the time into it that winter to keep the lake up. So we'd have some water for fire protection and... It also affects groundwater, you know, things like that.
So would that be just opening up a little bit or doing that constant process of open and close? If you open up...
Probably a combination of both. You'd have to sort of adjust that depending on what the year looks like.
Yeah.
You know, what the season looks like, what you had for rainfall and whatnot. I mean, right now, it's fairly well overwhelmed. Things are pretty wet. That one's a pretty steady flow. And that's just what's flowing over the top of the weirs into the dam.
Yeah.
Into that structure.
Even when that closes, flowing over the top. That makes sense.
Yeah, it's been closed since February 15th. It only took, what, twenty-one days to fill it? It filled pretty quick this year.
Unlike what they said in the report, Fisheries report of how long it took to refill.
There was some question last week. I wish the Conservation Commission and some other things. And there was some questions for Hillary about the health of the lake. And I mentioned that, you know, it seemed like it's healthy as it can be right now, you know? State's one of the better lakes in the state, well, I understand.
Mike Jermaine did say he was gonna come see us tonight. I spoke to him earlier. I think he mentioned he had spoken to you. According to him, we actually... They have done Fisheries and Wildlife Assessment. He thinks it might have been, the last one might have been 2017 or 2019. Which might be later, you know, less recently than they would like. But according to that, at that point, he said that we were like in extremely deficient, that we had a lot of fish diversity. So it's not just the stock trout, it's lots of stuff. Which made me feel a lot better.
It's healthy enough that they put some couple hundred rainbow trout in there on the 25th of March, so...
I mean, they stocked some things, but what he's telling me is that that found lots of different fish, which is like, it's not just that the trout they stocked survived. It's that fish are breeding successfully in there.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Backwater wasn't healthy enough for Fisheries, and I would like to feel that they can release rainbow trout in there and it'll survive.
And it's oxygen enough for them to survive because they need really high oxygen.
To me, if they felt that it was not the fish habitat, they would spend the time researching that.
Right.
My... The big picture kind of is we were denied the order of conditions. As I understand it, we have to go for another one.
Right.
Do we go for the six feet? There's like, if you read the different reports, there's all these pros and cons. There's the actual design of the dam to take into consideration. There's flood control. Another... So as we're doing this order of conditions, none of us are really gonna be preparing it, but we'll probably be tangentially involved. The lake scientists, as I understand it, probably Hillary or maybe Ken Wagner or the lake scientists are really gonna be the ones preparing the...
NOI.
NOI, where it probably will be.
And Michael did say that they're couldn't do that.
Yeah. If we wanted to make a strategic decision, like, you know what? With all of everything going on, we just don't wanna do a drawdown. That's not where I'm at, but we could make that decision.
So one thing that Michael did say today was that he actually approached the folks that do the milk oil control and was told that if we did a three-foot drawdown, it would probably treble the milk oil control cost.
Do it what?
Treble.
Yeah.
Threefold more. Over a hundred grand for a milk oil control. Because it gives them an additional twenty-five acres or something of area where they'd have to do milk oil control. Which is a lot more. But that does concern me that there's that many. Twenty-five acres is a lot. It's really hard for me to believe that there's... That we're exposing twenty-five acres.
Seventy-five acres. That didn't sound like...
Acres?
Sixty-five, dude, triple the cost.
The whole lake is like two-hundred and...
Seventy.
Just over two-hundred.
But it must be so it's really shallow at the edges, so six foot is a lot.
Well, all of the small pond pretty much becomes dry. Brewer Pond pretty much becomes dry. And then on the east end of the lake, you know, past like the end of Bidwell Road.
Right.
That's all dry. And then everything around the edges too. I mean, where my head is at is weighing all the pros and cons, thinking whatever negative effect, which I'm sure there are negatives of the six-foot, we've been experiencing that for fifty years on and off. So if it kills some species, it's probably...
It's already not there, right?
Which is, you know, maybe unfortunate. On the other hand, we put all this time and energy into fighting invasive milk oil and this is probably the single most effective way of doing it. And it's natural.
So I gotta back up. You know, I just came into this a couple of years ago and I know nothing about it. What I'm learning as we go. I've read the original proposals that were back in the early seventies. And the purpose for that dam is spelled right out. And the purpose is that flood control, number one.
What would flood?
This village.
Yeah.
If that lake were to become overwhelmed and the dam were to fail.
If the dam was to fail?
Well, it happened once in the downtown flood, like fifteen years ago or something.
But I don't think that was because of the dam failing.
In the event of extreme weather or a longer duration of time, ten inches of rain over twenty-four hours, let's say, with an already saturated water table, that lake could... That dam could be overwhelmed. And then that water has to go somewhere. So this is why we draw this down. We have room for storage for the spring runoff. I mean, if we did have a winter where we had four, five, six feet of snow back on the mountain, that's where a fair amount of that runoff goes. Add a twenty-four weather event with ten inches of rain and all that water has to come through the village here. So we created a situation that allows for some storage.
See, I think that the flood that occurred in town was because of... Not because of dam failure or anything like that. It was because of the sheer amount of water that was running through it, yeah.
So everything becomes overwhelmed. So what this allows the town to do is store some water and hold it back. Release it.
Yeah.
As time allows, you know? So that was, that's the primary... That was the primary reason for that proposal. Secondary to that is being able to draw it down and maintain that structure. And the thing was to be able to maintain their shoreline properties. It actually spells that out in there. So, you know, there would be quite an effect on... A negative effect on people that own properties around the lake. At some point in time, we discovered that there were other benefits to this. Helps all the milk oil. And that's all, that was all secondary to how this whole thing was designed. And I just think that it's frustrating in a way because we've gotten way off what the original purpose of even having this structure was. And you get conflicting reports from DEP and from Fisheries and Wildlife and from Army Corps of Engineers and Dam Safety. And it just seems to me that if we got principals from all the parties concerned in one room and we could sort out who has the jurisdiction over what, we would be in a lot better shape moving forward if we could, you know, if that was all well documented.
So as Mike Jermaine, the Fisheries people are actually... Fish and Wildlife is actually advisor. They're not... They don't have sway over the decisions.
I think one of the problems we're running up against is just that most of these organizations are not taking a holistic view on everything involved. They're just, they're there to protect wetlands or endangered species. And then if we run up against one of those organizations that has one cause they wanna defend, they're not by holistic view. One thing that Mike's mentioned that I'm very interested in, because you mentioned flood control, is going the route of getting this approved for flood control, which as I understand, is a different process. And probably then might mitigate all these other concerns. If we have to do it for flood control, we have to do it for flood control and everything else kind of becomes secondary. The problem is, yeah, there's just too many, there's too many people involved. And we're the only ones that are looking at the big picture.
So what do we do in seven or eight years when we have to replace the tubes under Tierney and Road? We know that they're failing, you know? We know they have to be replaced. And, you know, we should be looking forward over the next seven, eight, ten years at that project, right? How are you gonna do that? You gotta draw the lake down.
Yeah, that probably makes it a heck of a lot easier.
I'm sure it'll save millions.
What I would think that would make the most sense going forward, you know, may... I'm only afraid of trying to use common sense with the state just because I don't, I haven't seen it work previously for the most part. Especially when you talk about DEP or something with a narrow, limited focus. But what I would like to do is do the order of conditions, you know, with the lake scientist for the six-foot. There's the pros and cons of it, but at the end of the day, you just gotta make a decision with big picture. And then also look into the separate flood control, which Mike said will probably take maybe up to a year. But it sounds like if we could get that approved, that could kind of put this to bed. In the meanwhile, it's hard to get that NOI or the order of conditions or whatnot. Because they want a bunch of reports and all this information. But part of it is like the new sensor that Mike got put out there, that's keeping a bunch of data that's probably gonna be valuable when we go through this process, so...
I'm sure it will, but the only thing that it's showing is... I shouldn't say the only thing, it's showing stuff all year long, but the one area of concern that pops up now and again is the rate at which it flows out and the rate at which it refills, which outflow is probably gonna be a fairly fixed number. We're gonna know that it takes, you know, thirteen days on average to draw the lake down.
Because it's always to the same height.
A lot of the beavers don't...
If you're always going to the same depth, then yeah.
A lot of the beavers don't mess up our flow rate, which they do. The refill rate, I think, will be very, very different. You know, I think there probably are years in the past that, you know, it probably still wasn't full at this time of year. You know, even closing up at the fifteenth of February. Is that when you always open it? About the fifteenth or close to fifteenth? We're gonna try to be a lot more diligent. I don't have any specific date of the dam. Lake, where are we, summer, mid-Lake February, it's kind of been a... I don't know if there's ever been any specific dates now for Fisheries.
I mean, the thing is, you have to open it. Then you're opening it, you have to look, almost like you have to look forward and hope that their weather prediction is right and adjust accordingly. Opening it earlier if they're saying it's gonna be dry and later if they're saying it's gonna be wet. But who knows if they'll be right?
You know, I think it's a worthwhile commitment that if we had a drought season, that we would monitor that. But I think it's also... It's kind of silly, really, to have somebody have to go up there every day or, you know, multiple times a day to try to, you know, how close to the three feet would we have to be?
And to the degree that it's like raining some days and then dry other days, it's not gonna be consistent.
Right.
Even, even probably these days, when we have a rain event, it goes up. I remember during Hurricane Sandy or Irene going down to the lake and the water that was normally below everyone's docks was, had lifted them up and...
Yes, yes, yes.
We don't keep it exactly this or that. It fluctuates for the day and night, right?
So the area to the right of the earthen dam is the spillway. And some of the old timers have said that only one time did it almost crest that spillway.
Wow.
So the design is good, you know? There's been a lot, awful lot of weather events in the past forty, fifty years.
Can the...
Gate?
The gate? Can that be changed?
To go the other way?
No, 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 no. I mean, could you... I know you said it's like, it's like a head wall, it's like a foundation for a house. I mean, could you put another pipe in and open it and have it so it opens from the top down? Like in the wintertime? In the wintertime, you get some guys in there to do construction on it?
I think that you could, you could do anything here at the limit of your imagination, really. You know, you could do whatever you want.
And your pocketbook.
Do you have your beavers to do it? All because they're gonna dam it on six feet. And they'd go more if they could.
Yeah.
You know, yes, I mean, the correct answer really is yes, but it's... It's not much of a... I think I mentioned that in an email several months ago that said, you know, if DEP wants to fund design and install of a fully automated system, then... So we it, you know? I'm all ears. Until then, it's business as usual. See you on the 15th of November.
So I think you're, I like your fundamental concept of let's do the NOI. We may or may not have to... I know Hillary is the current lake scientist they're using, whose specialty is aquatic vegetation. Whether or not she also could do a wildlife assessment or not. That's making me crazy stomach.
Sorry.
Whether or not she's also qualified, like, she would be able to tell us what...
It sounds like we have to hire other beaver people. I'm apparently not enough of an expert because I was walking around Brewer Pond the other day and I saw a beaver. That doesn't count.
Trust me, they're doing fine up there. Whatever we're doing, they're surviving just fine.
Mike did say that he doesn't think it's even fish that they're as worried about as some of the invertebrate species, but like...
Like organisms.
Yeah, and lots of other organisms. And, you know, I don't... I would love to see an assessment of the lake. What they can tell us is what's there. What they can't tell us is what might be there if we didn't do it. Because you can only say you're not seeing something yet, but you... There's no guarantee it ever was there, right? Like, we've been doing this for fifty years. So they would be basing it on how frequent they're at present at other lakes. I don't know. I don't think there's a downside except the cost of doing it.
Yeah, but it's a cost, right?
Right, but there's a cost and we don't know what that cost is. Meanwhile, I think the... Do we even know who we... Where do we go to talk to someone about getting permission to do it on the basis of flood control?
We'll do it.
No, well, I know, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it.
We have to look into it, okay.
We'll ask town council, we'll...
I think that's probably the last thing to give. Find out who actually has the key here, you know? Who's got the jurisdiction on this thing.
Because I think that other, other than doing that and maybe getting a trump card, we're probably have to play... We probably have to make all these other departments happy. And at least from what I know of them, and, you know, the people who've been really good on the ConCon will tell you whether or not you agree with it. Their job is to read the Wetlands Protection Act and tell you what, how the Wetlands Protection Act contains. They don't care that it's gonna cost you X, Y, or Z. They don't care about maybe flood control. They care about the Wetlands Protection Act.
Correct. But unfortunately, we all have to look at all of them.
Well, I think it's not unfortunate, it's just frustrating that...
For me, the flood control and life safety and preservation of lives and personal property are, as I know of, a priority. It's large and it's one of the words to mention.
Do we... I wonder if there's any factors. Do we have any data on how quickly the... Like, if it rained an inch, how much would the lake rise? Like, do we have any data on the refill rate? Not because it's variable based on, you don't know how much it's gonna rain. But it's probably not variable in terms of if there's a weather event of X number of inches, the lake rises X number of times. Why?
I think there's a lot of other factors there. How dry the season will be having, you know? Is it really dry and the water just runs off the top and into the lake? Is it, you know?
Right.
An average season and the water's able to...
So good, or now when, I feel like the, you know, you got the first few inches are dry, but below that, everything's wet, right?
That would probably be a good time.
Measure with that.
Figure that out.
But it would be good, I mean, I feel like it would be...
Be much harder than me.
Well, but the reason I think it's useful to know for the purposes of flood control is even if it's within parameters, is that that means that if we know how much water, if there's a prediction for how much rain there will be, right, in the next week or whatever, you have a little better tool for estimating what your, what your ability to control it is and how much it's gonna rise, right?
I think the old timers probably were, they, you know, they pay attention to the weather and they go and draw it down a little bit if they felt they needed to and, you know...
There's gonna be a hurricane, let a little water out.
I think it's probably Dennis probably. Rolls up for Dennis, sorry?
Frozen.
Rolls up.
No, that... Jim was here, so we started with him.
Dennis, do you want to... Do you have anything to add on this?
Well, yes. First of all, good evening to everyone. I think Mike is going to take the responsibility of, you know, the recommendation and discussion regarding the Lake Garfield working. Just wanted to say that I think it makes a good historical place. The important thing to do right now is, you suggested, Justin, is to move ahead with the NOI so that that portion can be, of the Wetlands Protection Act can be satisfied. And I think, Michael, if you'd like to take a...
Sure, I actually have some brand new information.
Can I fill you in a little bit, Mike?
Yeah.
Just about what we're talking about. So Jim showed us a diagram or not, a model of how the dam works.
Did you show that?
What?
Nice. I'm impressed.
Get a few minutes one night.
This afternoon.
It's not making noise.
I bring the oil next time.
WD-40.
Where's the handle?
Listen, it's incredibly... It's incredibly flavor intensive to raise and lower that. And I wanted you to have the real experience.
So I was kind of proposing that we go for the NOI or apply to the ConCon.
My new information will...
For the six-foot drawdown and then, and then also go for the flood.
Yeah, so it's more complicated than that, so it's better if I explain the whole thing. So as might be expected, because we're in the backwoods here, you know, we're behind everyone else. And so this has begun for quite a few years, actually, with a lot of lakes. And so I got a lot of great information today from GZA? GZA, which is the engineering company that does our dam inspection. Turns out they're representing two lakes for quite some time on the same issue. So a lot of these lakes knew this was coming for a long time. So the one that's most far ahead on this whole process is Pontusick. And they represent Pontusick and they're two years into the whole process. So that's good for us because they're leading the way. They're obviously gonna hit the obstructions and everything before us and hopefully clear the way for us. So it seems like the process is this. It's like, it's fine if we go for the NOI. But the problem will be, there will still be obstacles after that because they believe Fish and Wildlife will appeal to... To MEPA. MEPA? MEPA?
I don't know. Do you know what it stands for?
Myer... Massachusetts Environmental...
Protection Act?
Protection.
Policy Act Office?
Office, something like that.
Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act.
Yeah, but there's an office for it. And so actually, I looked it up and, you know, I've talked to Dam Safety and they told, we told me that we would probably have to go through this process. Dam Safety Office in the state seemed to be supportive of towns doing this. But MEPA apparently has the ultimate say. And so it's likely any of these, whether it's the NOI or you appeal or you go through the process of applying for a permanent permit, it's still gonna have to go to them. And, and you have to go through Chapter 19 first.
What's Chapter 19?
Chapter 19 is a Waterways Act. So it, the process takes well over two years because Pontusick is not finished. The other lake they represent is Richmond Lake. She told me that the whole processing thing, permitting is gonna take cost over a hundred thousand dollars. Just so you know.
To get a permit for what? For flood control or...
Well, all the consulting and all the things that need to be done to, you know, to apply, to get the permits.
Can it be done in perpetuity?
Well, that's what it is, perpetuity at that point. If you go, if you go to...
Might be worth it.
To get the permits, yeah. But, so they're just bound to not let anybody draw a dam at all.
Who is?
Fish and Wildlife. And I can explain the details if you want to. But the point is, they believe that drawdowns are harmful to the lakes, to the invertebrates, the mussels, the tadpoles, the beavers, and I think even the fish. And so they want to stop all drawdowns. So GZA recommends the following process for us, and I think this is what we should do. First of all, we should engage them as our consultant. Because they're already going to other lakes and they're, I think, experts. You've been happy with them, right? They seem to be excellent.
They're doing this over here?
They're doing that, yeah. So the first thing they have to do is they have to do a engineering, I guess we would call it, analysis of flood control. So the first thing they have to do is they have to do a engineering, I guess we would call it, analysis of flood control. So they need to to crunch the numbers of the lake and what would happen in a flood if we didn't draw it down. So that basically they have to give a ju- engineering justification for what could happen if we don't draw it down in the flood. Now, you know, we also talk about dam maintenance. Well, fish and wildlife have gotten wise to that. And they go like, yeah, you can draw it down for a week, few arrangements, and then draw it back up again. So that didn't work. If you go back, I sent uh Justin a bunch of these old records, but there was this letter by Dean Amadon, which I thought was great.
We all got.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So you saw how he gave the rationale for why the dam was built. So I think that's gonna be very helpful because it was not built ever for weed control. It was built for flood control. And he talks about the drawdown and um. You know, how it and and there's also protection of property. I don't know how much weight that carries. But I guess flood control ultimately is property, well, life too, right? I guess.
Depends on how catastrophic the failures.
Right, because there's people who live right here and, you know, I don't know. I mean, only engineers can tell us what could happen in the spring. If there's like a massive storm and um there was no way for um the dam, I mean, to the lake to buffer that. I suppose you don't want those storms anytime of the year, but.
Absolutely.
But then when the lake's full then, so that might be your.
But we have the we have the ability to draw that down prior to, you know.
Right, but most of I mean, it's the spring thaw.
Right, more specifically, yes.
Right, where there's always a danger, right? So I think that's what the engineers have to emphasize that, you know, snowpack. I mean, obviously, we don't get snowpack, but we usually get snowpack. And then that spring runoff, obviously, we know what's happening a lot of places when that happens with flooding. So that was, I think, the original justification was in the spring, snow melts, the snowpack melts. You have the lake buffering it and that prevents. And then on top of that, if you have some massive storm, then you've protected yourself. So I think maybe that's the rationale. If you have the storm, you know, the storm pattern at the same time happening together, that's a disaster, right?
One thing.
Whereas in summer, you don't have the two things happening together.
Correct.
Okay.
One thing maybe we could do, and I don't know if it's been done or not, but if the news says we get hurricane, we're gonna have hurricane Sandy in a week. I don't know if this has been done, but maybe and I don't know if the the powers that be would approve of it, but maybe we let some water out.
Well, that's what Jim's saying.
That we can.
Allegedly in the past.
Allegedly in the past, what?
We don't know anything. We have no clue if it's ever happened or not.
Right.
Michael.
Well, Sean, I mean.
No, it's happened, yeah, it's happened, yeah.
I mean, Sean, a few years ago.
Allegedly.
Didn't, yeah, did not draw it down completely.
Correct.
And I never understood the exact rationale. I mean, I know I know he's trying to protect. The the basin there for the um.
Well, it was for fire protection and it also helps with groundwater.
Right, but as opposed to six feet, three feet.
Correct.
Then he had been able to fill that basin up with. So anyway, there's different options. That doesn't help us with rationalizing a six foot drawdown, but.
No, it shows that that the point of it is to flood control or maintaining water level. That the it it does demonstrate that it has consistently been used. And when the water, remember, there wasn't enough water and there was a drought. We didn't do the drawdown because we didn't think we needed and we needed to have the water.
Yeah, well, fish and wildlife doesn't have any problem with that. They only have a problem with drawing it down all winter. You know, for weed control. That's what they don't like.
Right.
And so that's the first thing. So I told them, go ahead with that, do their engineering analysis.
You told who go ahead with what?
Uh, GZA.
So well, we need a hundred thousand dollars.
No, no, that's not gonna be a hundred thousand.
Ninety-nine.
Where are the funds for that?
Well, I mean, we'll pay for it. I mean, Friends Lake Archill will pay for that. This is gonna be a fee. That'll be a maybe a couple thousand dollars. That's gonna be a lot of money, but.
It'll be how much money?
He she didn't give me exact quote, but I don't think it's gonna be it's gonna be probably less than I'm guessing less than two thousand.
You probably had any security.
Yeah, right.
You might want to get that money.
So can we keep this going for the whole hunt project?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what the lake district thought about.
So we got.
Not really. The town is not giving up control of the dam to the district.
No, we're not suggesting, we don't want it.
Especially what you know now.
No, we don't want it, but you know, the question is, would the district help you with the permitting and everything else like that? I mean, like we do now, essentially.
So after they do the engineering.
The money fine.
No, it do.
But after they do the engineering flood analysis, then what?
Okay, but the other piece that we need is from Jim is as much records as he can get of records of what has been done every year. I don't know, write out a sheet of paper, no?
No, the only records that we have right now since I took over, the emails that I send. Saying when we drew it down and when we closed it up, it's like.
Does the town have anything or Sean or?
We sent that as as a matter of record is why I sent that.
I always thought it was just October fifteenth and that was that, but.
Something in writing. What sort of things? Something in writing that says?
Yeah, something in writing to say it was done on this date, done on that date.
Honestly, Mike, I don't think it was that well tracked.
Okay.
And I don't and I don't mean that in a bad way. I think it was just something that happened.
I understand.
Old timers got it done.
Yeah, no, I understand. But if it is possible that someone had their own personal records, I would suggest we ask Sean.
I will ask him.
And um maybe he got something from um what's his name before that?
Maynard.
Maynard.
Maynard kept pretty good records of a lot of things, but I have yet to run across anything like that.
There like a file cabinet there?
A lot of file cabinets. That whole lot.
Yeah.
So.
Might be good to come back and look for it.
The long and.
The long, I mean, I think the older ones are better for us because it shows that we've been doing. See, the thing is, we say we've been doing it since the dam was built, but what documentation? Because that gives us grandfathering. The more evidence we have for that. Maynard, I assume, is not alive anymore.
He is, yeah.
Live well.
Oh, that's.
He's in Texas, I think.
You have, anybody have his number?
Yeah, we have it. I mean, we got. Somebody I'm sure about that.
Yeah.
Try to get ahold of him and.
Yeah.
I mean, even if he gives us some verbal stuff, I mean, maybe he's got a record somewhere, but that's gonna be gold, I think.
Or he may know where, I mean, he may go, yeah, it's in the third file cabinet from the right, in the back of the third floor.
So but the long and short of this, Michael, is we have to come up with a lot of money to pay a lot of consultants.
Eventually, by the end of two years.
By the end of two years? What do you mean by that?
I mean, it'll be.
It'll take two years to do.
Leading out over time.
So what are we gonna do this October?
This October, we're gonna do an NOI. We're going to add in the flood control, which I originally thought we wouldn't. We do it as a separate thing, but now I understand from GZA you do it kind of together.
Together with the uh millfall?
Yes, so in other words, we're going to submit an NOI for drawdown. And with that, we're going to explain to the Conservation Commission how we're engaging this process. And we'll give a outline of the process that we've started, that we intend eventually to be able to support this at MIPA. And if necessary, if it seems to make sense, we'll get a permanent permit, do this through them.
Isn't that what happened before though? Wasn't wasn't it mixed in with the mill foil and so they had.
Well, yeah, I can't remember. I don't have the year where it led into that, but it.
It only ha- happened within since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
Forever, the drawdown was its own thing in front of the Concom, right? And then a year or two ago, we decided to.
Well, we never, it was never did get together. That was pulled apart because that was the idea, but it never happened. So it's always been separate, but it has been for mill foil. So at least the records I have, at least two thousand and two. Concom approved an NOI that was specifically for weed control for mill foil. Um and you know, I don't know when that started. I know. Weed control was an issue in the eighties, late eighties, nineties. And drawdown was part of that, but I don't know that. I don't know when when the dam ever got first permitted. I don't know, maybe it was two thousand and two. Yeah, so I.
Maybe it was just done before then.
Yeah, it was just done because we thought we could.
I don't think.
We opened the dam and.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it was done on an extension every year, right?
Well, yeah, there was original NOI in two thousand and two, then with extensions.
They just kept extending it.
And we just got denied last week on that.
Yeah, and that was.
Original.
That was unfortunate. I think that giving us another year would have been very, very helpful.
Yeah.
But.
Would have saved us a lot of money in our.
Would, yeah. Because it would have, you know, maybe the Pontusic thing would have been resolved and then fish and wildlife backs off and. Which still could happen.
So how does fish and wildlife hold us up?
How can they hold us up?
How ha- do they have any power to?
No, they don't. They they can only appeal it after the the only thing that is required is that you submit your NOI. To fish and wildlife. I believe it's the Conservation Commission's responsibility when you send an NOI that they forward it to DEP and fish and wildlife. For some reason, last year, the extension didn't happen. That guy fish and wildlife pissed off, that guy DE pissed, DEP pissed off. Anyway.
What got them?
The fact that they didn't get notified of the extension.
The paperwork wasn't filed, correct?
Well, they did get notice, they did, they did get notified of it, but they they wanted to be notified before when you put in your. Notice of intention, even though this wasn't notice of intention. So I guess an extension still, when you apply for an extension, I suppose. They want to be notified and we have the right to give comment. But they can either stop the Conservation Commission from the giving orders of condition. All and the DEP is the one that can tell you, send it back to you and say, no, no, we think you got it wrong or whatever, not fish and wildlife. So what fish and wildlife can appeal the order of condition to to MIPA. That's what they can do. And that can put the orders of condition on hold while they do that.
So the plan right now is to for Hillary to prepare an NOI?
Yeah.
And to and to look at a long-term consultant relationship with GZA to apply for a permanent permit?
Well, it's combined now, so it's the idea is that, you know, they GZA wants us to go ahead with the NOI. And in parallel, they'll look at the permitting thing because they say MIPA's MIPA's gonna get involved either way, right? So but we'll we'll know more as Pontusic goes forward.
Is is Hillary qualified to do um and I'll call it a biotic assessment other than plants?
No.
Is that something we need to like, would GZA do it or we hire somebody else?
No, we're gonna hire someone else. So we got names.
Okay.
Having Hillary coordinate that. So you're gonna talk to Ken Wagner, so we need a beaver expert in. And we need a mussels expert. So the idea is we'll get all these consults and we'll get a report on flood flooding from GZA. And that will all be ready for the NOI. So then when we present the new NOI to Concom. It's gonna be much more detailed with a lot more support for why why we're doing it. How we're gonna do it and how we're gonna monitor it. And you know, so it's gonna answer all the questions, really. It may not be to fish and wildlife satisfaction, but we will give them the answers that they're looking for.
What do you need for money?
To be in the loop and, you know, support it.
And eventually money, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to go to a town meeting next year or make these special town meetings. As we see what what monies are available or what monies are necessary.
How how do we stay in the loop?
Uh, just me contacting all of you.
You can also loop in Frank and Susan on all the emails too.
Jack, uh Frank and who else?
Susan.
Oh, Susan, yes, definitely. Frank, I think, I'm not sure I have his full, it's just Frank.
Frank, yeah.
Frank has modeled it.
We're all just our first thing.
Yeah, so I'll just put everyone up, put uh Roger in the loop, put Kevin in the loop. And um that's how everything I get about the drawdown all.
Yeah, I know. I've been on a lot of it.
Yeah.
Um but I I don't know that they've always seen it as much.
Right.
And I just have always felt like, cause there wasn't something we had to deal with, I kind of glanced at them, but I never really knew what was going on. It just didn't really.
There's a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I know you guys have a lot of, if you mind, this is getting, you know, number one, more complicated, but it's also a moving thing. So what I tell people one week is different the next week. And it's not because I made shit up or I lied. It's just I got new information. And like this afternoon, she calls me up and it's like, oh, I didn't know that.
Who told you about that, Hillary or GZA?
Oh, GZA.
How did you get in touch with them?
I called them.
Yeah, because you heard about what was happening on Pontusic?
No, I didn't know what was happening on Pontusic. She told me all that. I called because I knew we would need them as a consultant if we were gonna go ahead with this permitting thing.
For the permanent uh permit?
So I I called the guy I knew there because I've been working with them on calibrating the monitor. So we were getting the right water flows and they they were very helpful. They did all calculations for me, helped me make sure that Hillary came. And did her sur- survey all day on the lake Thursday. And she brought a new water mon- or water flow thing with her. So she took readings and that way then we can calibrate it. And then we'll know exactly that we're getting the right numbers out of that device. And so. That's how I knew the guys at GZA. Jim put me in touch with them. And also I wanted to get records from them in the past and about the maintenance and stuff and the building of the dam and all that sort of stuff.
Were they the original engineers?
Well, Brown, Brown Associates for Fish and Wildlife, not Brown.
So then um so I knew them. And so when this came up that we would need an engineer consultant. I thought I'll call them up, see if they do this sort of stuff. And then I spoke to the guy with my contact there, then he goes, like, oh, yeah, yeah. And I believe we are doing this for other lakes and then we'll have such and such call you. Her name is Andrea Cunk, C U N K.
So we'll we'll stay in the loop. You'll probably tell us at some point that you need some funding for consulting.
Yeah.
And well, at some point, make a decision if we really wanna go for that permanent permit.
Well.
But right now, we're going for the NOI.
Yeah, but we may.
We'd do something to fill that gap.
Okay.
We basically have to do something to bridge that gap for permitting.
Oh, for sure. But I think unfortunately, we're probably gonna need a lot of engineering stuff to. Be consulting going on even with the NOI, right? So we need that support for the NOI, some of the the stuff they're gonna do. So what I need from you guys is get records from um Maynard.
I can do that. That's fine, thanks.
Okay.
If he has.
See if he remembers me.
Will will.
I used to work for Hunter Rose when I was a kid.
You worked for him?
What?
You worked for Maynard?
Yeah, I used to do, you know, this shit work when I was like fifteen years. Who's this too bad?
Will will this NOI and everything get done by November fifteenth? Will it dissolve?
Oh, oh, absolutely.
Unless we get denied.
But the application will be done, you know.
Yeah, it'll happen.
We don't know if they'll approve it, but we know that we can have it done.
Yeah, I have a good feeling like we'll get approved, but then I don't know how quickly fish and wildlife.
So how to on the October agenda for the Concom?
Boom, quick, run out there, open gate.
Like, after then, after it's up, then it's like, it's stuck.
It's stuck.
All above work, we're even getting above work. Kind of beavers jam something in there.
Jim, how about that lock?
What are you talking about?
I don't think the lock is like.
The Concom denied the extension.
Yeah.
Right? So we're sending in an NOI.
Yeah.
Back to the Concom.
Yeah.
With the hopes that they're not gonna deny that or whatever.
Yeah.
Partly improved NOI.
Part of the problem. Part of the problem, and Michael, as Michael has told me and will admit, right, the reporting hasn't always been up to snuff.
Right.
Yeah, so.
They, they felt there needed to be more data for that.
And we've been, um. It was kind of all over the place the last couple of years between combining them and then taking them apart. And this is gonna be a clean application with a lot more data, right?
Yeah, true. And that, there'll be more clear cut what we're actually trying to do. And so what's on me, I don't know exactly, but what I hear is that they felt like when they gave the extension last year, they told us. That they expected a new NOI, right?
Pretty much.
And, you know, I didn't know that. And I don't know who did that because.
That's pretty much what we were told on Thursday.
Right, but, but you, you think you remember that you did say that or?
I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I wasn't at that meeting a year ago and, um. I don't know, Hillary was there?
Well, I have to say, as a town and as a slot board, I know that I dropped the ball and not really being up to speed on this.
Yeah.
So this is good to get going up in the deep end, which hopefully there's no drawdown and there's actually water.
My defense or whatever, I, I always try to keep him in the loop on what we were doing and talking to her about it. So I just feel like. Miscommunication happened.
And they're doing their job.
No.
We're doing our job.
Yeah.
We're trying to.
She gets overwhelmed at times and I think she, you know, we'll, we talked about something and then she'll forget that, that we talked about it and. You know, so maybe we need more.
Documentation.
Documentation of what.
That's key.
Yeah, it's happening.
Alright, so we'll do that. You'll work on the NOI with Hillary. If you need something from Jim, you know how to reach him.
Just the record, just the record.
I'll keep looking.
Whatever records you have that he's given and then.
I just have, I just found one file, but it's all probably the same stuff you have. It's all just letters and all that stuff.
Well, Mike, does that have anything about, from the roads department about?
Nah, nah, I just kind of slipped through it, but I do have, but I do have a file I can show it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Welcome, welcome.
One year and, you know, look at it.
Well, you're still here, Michael. So you submitted some forms about the conflict of interest?
Yeah.
This, have either of you been able to look at them?
Which, or it's his form?
Yeah.
I, I looked at them when I first.
Yeah, so there's kind of two issues, two things going on here, right? Michael lives on the lake.
Right.
And he's involved in the Lake Garfield working group and now on the Conservation Commission. My feeling on that is there's so many people who live on the lake. And also it's a public resource where everyone can go to the public beach or launch their boats. That Michael shouldn't be prohibited from participating in matters related to the lake. Because it's really a public resource. When we talk tax district, we're talking over a hundred homes with waterfront. Over a hundred homes with deeded rights. And it's no.
A third of the population right there.
It's no longer really a private financial interest, so it was good that you did the disclosure, but I don't think you need to. Recuse yourself on issues about Lake Garfield just because it affects such a large portion of the town. And I think also the idea that it affects your property value. Is kind of abstract and far in the future. Um, and it's really a public resource with the public beach and everything.
And, and I don't think he's involved in the working group or the protection of the lake because of its financial potential for financial regeneration in some ways. Doing it because he cares about the lake that he lives on.
Yeah.
I mean.
So anyways, thanks for making the disclosure.
I think what I, which as a doctor, what we always did was we have potential conflict of interest, so disclosure of. So I think disclosure is important and I think it's what should be done. But I don't think we always need to recuse. But I think the proper way to do it is you, you know, you disclose your potential conflicts of interest. And then give it to the bodies you're in. So if like I was on the Supreme Court, you know, I would, should. It, it, you know, disclose it to the rest of the justices. And if the rest of the justices said, you know, no, we don't think you should act on this, you should just. You know, then that person should recuse themselves. If everyone said, thank you very much, now we understand, we'll take. Your comments into context with that because we'll, we'll know that you have the potential conflicts of interest, but you don't need to recuse yourself.
Well, yeah, so I think that's.
That's documented. I think no one's gonna fault you for that.
That's where I'm at. Michael's disclosed that he's, you know, lives on Lake Garfield. I think it's fair to say that the board doesn't see that as a real private financial interest because of the number of people who live on the lake. And how the lake is a public resource. Um, is that fair?
Absolutely. I, I would agree.
The only, here's the other thing that we've chatted about is, so then you're on Lake Garfield Working Group. And Lake Garfield Working Group spearheads the NOI to the CONCOM.
Right.
That's, to me, is different because if you are. Running the project of applying for the NOI and the order of conditions, how can you sit in a seat on the CONCOM? And act on that application fairly when you've participated in that process?
Yeah, so I guess I would say I'm not the applicant and I'm not actually the contractor, which would be Hillary and GZA.
You're not making any money on it.
No. Um, and so again, it's disclosure issue.
But would you vote on it?
What's that?
Would you vote on it on the CONCOM?
I would if, if everyone else was comfortable with that. If anybody in the Conservation Commission did want me to, I would.
I think to me it sets a.
I just wanna be.
It somewhat sets a bad precedent. And it just definitely is the appearance of not being fair, because if you've prepared an application. Almost certainly unless you're really a self-critic, you're gonna approve it, right?
But I'm not preparing, I'm not preparing.
Impartially, you're not preparing it.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see the financial interest. I don't see you having a financial interest in it. Um.
I'm just kind of like, I'm like Michael Cohen, you know? I'm a fixer.
Fixer.
I'm just out there, you know, making deals and.
Your group is, a group that you're part of, and is, is being represented by the NOI.
Yeah.
And you happen to be part of that.
I could come off that group and just attend their public meetings. I don't, you know, we don't do anything except give advice to you guys.
Yeah, I mean.
So I could definitely come off that committee.
But you're integral.
Yeah.
I mean, you're the lifeblood behind the NOIs and everything. You don't just happen to be a member of the group. You do most of the work by far.
Yeah, but if, if I'm just, there is a interested public person. And out of the business of my heart, giving this, them this information, making these phone calls and being a liaison with these people.
Yeah, you're not getting paid to do it. I see, it's not about the financial interest, Michael, or about.
But if I don't, if I'm not a member of the committee and making votes, I'm not part of that group making official recommendations to you guys.
It's more the perception, right?
It's, but it, there's definitely a perception that you're, I mean, from my perspective, I think you are foundationally involved. You're the one that's going out and reaching out to GZA, and I'm not criticizing you for it. I'm grateful for you doing it. But at the end of the day, if, um, th- there is definitely a, gonna be an appearance of a conflict in that. If you're the one who organized the NOI. You shouldn't be sitting on whether the NOI is acceptable.
Well, yeah, I mean, which I'm fine with, but just someone needs to tell me that. I'm fine with voting, I'm fine with not voting, guys. But if the select board says not to do it, I won't do it. If one person on the CONCOM says they shouldn't do it, I won't do it.
I can almost guarantee you, it's gonna be one person on the CONCOM. I think frankly, I mean, I don't think that you have a personal financial interest in the outcome of it. Um, or the extent that you do, it's shared by a large, large portion of the town.
Yeah.
And it's, it's far into the future and kind of abstract. It's not about that. It's about the appearance of how can you be impartial? When you've organized the preparation of this application. You don't have a financial interest.
Well, you're right about that.
Can you look at it from impartial? And I would say. It doesn't appear that way. If you, if you organize the preparation, preparation of application. It kind of in one way is not ideal because you know as much about Lake Garfield probably as almost anyone out there.
Well, I would, I would be fine with not voting, but I should be at the meeting, I should be able to discuss at least recuse myself from. The, you know, CONCOM part and sitting on the other side.
I was just gonna say, I think the ideal situation would be that you would be there, um, ed- trying to educate the CONCOM on the basis of the NOI. Supporting the NOI rather than voting on the other side of the table.
Well, let's see, I'll check in with town council. If you can do that, I don't have a problem because I don't see having a financial interest.
Yeah.
You know, as we discussed. But why don't we just check with town council? Cause we don't wanna run into any problems.
And I will say that, um, on the ZBA, uh, maybe two years ago. Um, we had a case where John Levin, the chair of the ZBA, had to recuse himself off the case because the applicant. With whom we had some significant issues and eventually went to court, was one of the neighbors. Um, he came to the meetings, but he sat on the other side because he did have things to say.
And he said.
As a neighbor, yeah. So, but he didn't sit on the board.
So on the other hand, my neighbor was on the ZBA about twenty years ago. And had a financial interest in the matter, was the attorney for the applicants. He recused himself from the meeting because he knew he had a conflict of interest. He showed up at the meeting anyway. Tried to keep quiet. People started asking questions and he started answering them. Had ethics complaint filed against him, was found in the wrong, especially because he was an attorney. And had to pay a fine. And he's never served on a town board since then. So. Let's just make sure, I don't want Michael to end up in the same boat because he's done so much for the lake and knows so much. I don't wanna put you, Michael, in a situation like my neighbor. Where you end up with a, a personal fine and a punishment.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure it's all above board. So I just wanna double check the town council that you can show up and sit on the other side.
Yeah.
Because like I said, just with my neighbor, he did kind of the same thing. He refused himself, but then he showed up. It was different because he was an attorney for the applicant. So he had that financial interest, but don't wanna put you in a bad situation.
Yeah.
So we'll just double check that. And then if they approve, you can probably, as long as the select board's okay with it and town council okay with it. You could sit on the other side and defend the application.
Yeah, okay. So that's good. And then, um, anything about the, oh, the, the Lake District, you wanna ask questions about or anything? What's your plan for like presenting it and?
Well, it's not on the agenda.
Night?
At, yeah.
At the ATM.
At the town meeting.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
Not that I wanna stop anything.
Yeah, no, I don't think you're on a push or. We're not, we wouldn't be, you know, they, yeah.
Okay.
So, so, uh, the plan for the Lake Tax District, um, I don't know that there's a plan per se.
So you're not gonna?
But I'm gonna be ready to answer questions. I'm gonna have town council ready to answer questions.
Okay.
The people who voted on it before will probably have some recollection of it.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, I'll be there and just, you know, I can answer questions too and.
It did pass when it was up before, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we sent something in a letter.
Yeah.
So I'll be there, I'll answer questions. Anything else?
I think that's all good. It's good to learn about the process.
Yeah, I'll just, I think this is gonna be a process and I'll just keep you guys informed on how it's moving ahead. And, um, you know, it's good that two other people come before us and these guys are now kind of experts because they're doing it for each other's sake, so. They'll tell us what to do really.
That would be very.
Hopefully, that's awesome.
Thank you, Punk.
Okay, guys, thanks.
Do you want that back?
I was leaving here for conservation, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As long as I tell.
Do we?
Yeah, well, we were gonna, I wanna ask you about Roger.
Yeah. That was, that's something else.
If you got any questions about Rogers.
Yeah, so I had a question for you.
Go ahead.
For me?
No, for him. Um, so you, presumably you heard the good news that Roger is okay with us. Using the seven fifty a month to pay for the purchase. The question I had is, I seem to recall that you had money for the purchase in your equipment line? No, okay. Okay.
Cause I, I talked to, I talked to Rob today, right? So, and he said that the seven fifty was good. Oh, he's, oh, he said he's okay with the seven fifty a month going towards the, uh, going towards the payment.
As a rent to home thing?
As a rent to home, yeah, yeah. And so he was okay with that. You know, I didn't really talk much more beyond whether or not it would be like, let's just plan for three years or one year with a payment rather than the end of the year. The only thing he really said was that, um, once that happens, we're responsible for all, all, all the, whatever work happens. So if somebody backs into it and breaks something, we have to call him at two hundred and fifty bucks an hour or something like that.
So that's what he said. Essentially, he, the, the, the portion he's referring to anyhow is from the pump out?
Yep.
The pump and all the controls already belong to us anyhow?
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's really kind of only half the system?
Oh, good.
It's actual camp.
Okay. Yeah, so I think we talked about, yeah, I even mentioned it to him about like, we should probably get something, you know, official written out between us and, us and him.
Yeah.
About those processes. But I think the question was, Susan wasn't, had thought you would put some money in there for, for that.
Yeah, when we were talking about buying it, in my mind, I was thinking about whether or not I could chuck the money around in opera, in operations.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Something else would have to suffer and then I'd do that.
Okay. I mean, you know, if we want to like throw more money at it, maybe you can do it, we'll pay the seven fifty down and then we can throw. It's only a little over three years to do that. If you wanna make it happen faster, we'll figure out a way to make that happen.
And if there is money, you know, I don't know if it's, what, what the procedures for that, if there's money left in, in machinery. At the end of this.
Given that.
At the end of this fiscal, we might be able to apply that towards.
Oh, that's great. The only thing he did say was that the, uh, the tip fee was going up eight and a half percent, which in, in the contract, it actually says that.
It allows that, it allows that. And I didn't know if you had any questions about the extending the contract.
I don't think so. Um, I do wonder, do you know offhand, I, I didn't even have a chance, cause I just found this out when I walked in. I haven't had a chance to go look at the numbers. When you did the budget, do you know if the, was a potential increase in the tip fee for this year included? Yeah, I'll have to look at it too.
I believe we did, or even the haul price and all that. So you probably, you may have taken that into consideration.
But the haul price was already listed, but the tip fee was up to ten percent, which is variable. We didn't know what at the time. So, uh, what, that's the unknown.
And there is some, there is some percentage built there for.
An increase.
Increased volume as well.
Increase in volume as well?
Right.
So we just need to look at that and make sure for Saturday and see if, like, if we figured for a five percent increase as an eight and a half, we may have to bump it up.
But we're raising sticker fees and all of our fees.
Right.
And are people gonna see an increase and go, let me call Roger and have them pick it up? I don't know, but.
I'm not picking it up.
But I know that. I know that in, uh, some of our neighboring towns, where the prices of the stickers are higher, they do get more turning to like a pickup service.
Um, I can tell you, I just, I ran the numbers at one point. It would cost them like four times as much to get picked.
Know what people do.
Yeah, I know. But people who have the money do it because they wanna do it. Like, there are people who do it just because, right? Like, they don't wanna have to call their trash.
I guess my point is it's a little unpredictable.
How many people will change their habits?
Yeah.
A lot of people will look at it as the, the sticker fee is going up and that's what it costs them to dispose of their trash. And, and not necessarily pay attention to how much it affected the tax rate. Which is, which is another real number that's coming out of everybody's pocket, you know?
Right.
Although that's spread out over all the real things.
So, and maybe no one looks at it and says, oh, I'll call Roger Chucky. But I will just say that in neighboring towns like New Marlboro, the sticker fee is a lot more aligned with the other towns. And you see a lot higher percentage of, um, pickup services. And maybe it's unrelated, or I don't know.
There's also a number of people that feel that that.
There's also a number of people that feel that that's a service worth paying for. They don't, you know, I mean, they don't want to be bothered with going to the transfer station on one of the three days that it's open and during those hours, you know, it's not gonna be it for them.
I, I can tell you that I, I was concerned for many years, I, I said, we're getting pickup, because I don't want to become a marital issue. Turns out, it's not a marital issue at all, but I was afraid it would be a marital issue. I could just see myself, that horrible harpy, like.
Fishmonger.
Young.
Fishmonger's wife.
The fishmonger's wife yelling at my husband, he thinks it does.
But as far as their service goes, you know, their first year's up and they've been fantastic.
Okay.
They're there for everything they need, and, yeah, marriage isn't an issue at all, if there's a question about something, obviously they'll.
But even if the fee is higher, that only helps us the following year. It goes into free cash. But doesn't.
Well, it depends if the accountant, when she's filling out the tax recap, takes into consideration when she's predicting the estimated receipts. Because if she knows that, she should go and put it into estimated receipts, and we actually raise less money taxes.
Ah.
So we should keep better track of how much we're bringing in.
Yeah, we should.
Anyway.
Anyway, okay.
I think we're ready to, to extend.
Let's go by.
When does that happen at the, at the transfer, because they sell stickers, they sell tickets at a transfer station, right?
No.
No, the younger.
It's on counter and.
The only thing they do up there is take money when people are dumping extra stuff.
Right. Okay, okay, okay. And we have a bit opening tomorrow at nine o'clock, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, you guys are doing a great job on the, uh, dirt roads, too.
Yes, indeed.
See y'all later.
Night, I hope for you.
I will move to extend the waste tribal contract with Roger Trucking, um, for, uh, one more year, which would be through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Wait, one more year, do we have to extend it for the complete length?
It just says consecutive one year.
Two consecutive one year, which I think, we actually can't extend it for two more years.
Okay.
We have to do.
Do that, right?
With the option of extending the contract for two consecutive one years.
Okay.
So that would be through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
That's second motion.
Okay, the motion second, is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval.
And Roger and I will double check what, the numbers to make sure that, um, the eight or eight and a half percent increase in tip fees can be accommodated with the current budget.
Yeah. Good. Minutes, so, the ones that were already drafted that we've had are four nine, four eleven.
I bring the nine.
And four sixteen, yeah. And I think I got everyone four twenty-four just before this meeting, so I presume that will be, uh, dealt with, uh, so, next week's meeting.
What about four two and four eight?
Yeah, and I meant to, and I didn't, and that meeting was.
What, four eight?
Four two, it was.
I, I know your pain, I really do.
So, I, I apologize for my color printer, because I'm waiting for some tone. So this is the nine, so, so you're, this is just, this is just you and Justin.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's easy then.
Yeah, so yours, yours are actually there.
Actually, if Justin drafted it, it's just my comments on it.
Yeah, well, it's the same thing, it's the same thing on the sixteen. And this is the eleven.
Wait, this is four copies?
Yeah.
And this is the sixteen.
The only thing I'm gonna ask for is, um,
and this is, this is the eleventh, which, I mean.
Okay.
You, you don't have any comments on there?
Nope.
So.
No, I was not gonna vote on it, just because I wasn't there.
Okay. So, do you want to start with nine?
Yeah.
Let me get my pen out. I'm sorry, so wherever, wherever there's, wherever it shows any, like, the, it's a little different, like, gray or layer, those are actually, um, Susan's comments.
So, right, the nine, it's, you wrote them and I commented, so obviously, I'm gonna support my own thing, so you just gotta say, you know, meanwhile, I'll read the sixteen to twenty-four count if you got mine.
Yes. I think that's how I did it.
Uh-oh, did I not? Right, that I drafted that, what happened?
Sixteen?
Yeah.
No, I drafted sixteen, yeah.
You drafted sixteen, which one was the one I drafted?
Eleven.
Okay.
So, we're just gonna do nine, four nine first. Make it simple.
And actually, we need to, I need to add that, we have to add to the eleven that we drafted by, right, it should say who drafted the minutes at the bottom.
I did, I don't do that.
You don't do that, no?
I can add it.
I think we should add it.
I figured it's approved by the board, but I'm happy to say, I can write in there, drafted by me, approved by the board.
All right, we're doing a new date, or it makes it easier.
All right. I will add in drafted by me, approved by S V, there. Just looking through quickly, I think all the changes are good.
We're still done.
Okay.
Are you all good?
Yes, good.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, we'll vote, uh, to approve the minutes of April ninth, Susan.
As amended?
Yeah, as amended, Susan.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Justin, yes, so. What I would request from either Susan or Roger, it doesn't matter who it comes from, but having it tonight would be good, is just this document? With the changes? Who's it, and is it easier to send, who, is it easier?
I, I, I have this, I have this document.
Yeah.
So, all I have to do is change the setting, so, so Susan's.
You just say, accept the order.
No, just send me this document, I'll do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you this document.
Yeah, that's all I need, and, but I just meant if Susan had it, then Susan could do it, but.
No, I, I, I combined the two together.
Yeah.
This, great.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll send this to you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's four nine. Four eleven. So four eleven should say drafted by Susan Cooper at the bottom.
Oh, and also.
Four eleven.
I'm gonna be looking for some documents that we use. So don't even bother sending it tonight.
Okay.
Roger, because I'm gonna need. So I can get the draft, I can get the budget and the warrant. I can get the email from Courtney. I'm not sure that I have the signed agreement with CSS Ventures, the special event permits, or the notary insurance renewal, I may have all of them or none of them.
So what were those three again?
You probably have this special event permit, because I remember they were in our email.
Items two, three, and four.
Oh, items two, three, and four.
Yeah.
The permits were in the email as it happened.
Yeah. If they are.
Yeah.
Should have. Then I'll have them.
I'm not sure about the other two.
Yeah, I have the, uh, I have a copy of the, the CSS, the IT one.
Yeah.
Right.
I have that, okay.
I guess the point being, sometimes I just go ahead and, and I just get into it, and I just do it tonight.
Right.
Let's not worry about that, because it's not gonna happen, because I gotta dig stuff up.
So, and do I recall that you said you defined the four line? So I'll move to approve the minutes of four eleven as amended with, that I drafted it as I drafted the minutes, did we have any documents that year?
No, we didn't.
Year, that meeting?
No, no, we didn't.
Okay.
We talked.
I'll make.
I second the motion.
I'll make one change before we finalize it, it's just E T E P.
Okay.
And.
And dra- and just be drafted by Susan, since you're doing the final copy, it's drafted by Susan Cooper at the end, and I, I agree with.
So, the vote on that.
Move to approve the minutes of four eleven as amended?
And we'll vote, Susan?
Want a second?
Yes, second the motion.
Susan?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And Justin's gonna abstain.
So, four sixteen were also drafted by me. No, by you, it's my comments, yeah, okay, right.
It's your comments.
Okay, we're so blessed, we're short. You good?
I'm all set.
I'm good.
I'll move to approve the minutes of, uh, April sixteenth as amended.
Second.
And we'll call a vote on that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a unanimous approval.
I'm working on the eighth right now.
Okay.
So.
You're working on the eighth, um, Frank?
For the second.
You want me to do the second?
I'll, I'll start it.
Well, and you're, it sounds like you might be headed down.
Yeah, I'll be doing next week's meeting, I'm like, hey, I'm not wanting to go down.
Are you sure you want to do the second?
Oh, it'd be great if you could.
I'll do the second, I'll do the second, and, well, actually.
I appreciate it.
The twenty-fourth is sent out to everybody. This is, we'll come back to that next week.
And what's the status of the job, sir, for the office assistant?
I, uh, put together, um, some, I just, I actually just sent it out, uh, I sent it to, uh, Mary, what's today, Tuesday? I, I sent it Monday, I sent her a whole bunch of things, a whole bunch of hour, um, I, I sent her a bunch of hour job descriptions. I sent her the town administrator job descriptions, because in there are, are, um, administrative items, like the, the ZBA secretary, Board of Health Secretary. And I also sent her, I had two lists from the Board of Health Agent Jim, I had a list from him, and also an old list from back in, uh, twenty twenty-three from Don Torrico, who he gave to the, I think he gave it to Melissa, Melissa forwarded to whoever the H R person was. And so I sent that as well.
Okay.
As for them to kind of like put together something, and I actually had a conversation with Mary sometime last week about kind of what this, what the, what the, uh, day-to-day functions would be, what, what, uh, that person would be doing, when they would be working. And then we're looking at like fourteen hours to start and kind of go from there.
Do you have a timeline in there, which you might have something?
I don't, I will reach out to her though and figure something out.
Not that I just reject someone else, drag them in and.
But did we want to ask Nancy if she could help, if she's on the team?
Are my minutes at that?
No, but I don't know if that's something to do it.
I know, but I will go back to my question, should we ask Nancy?
I could, no, no, I can do it one week. The problem was, beginning of April, the amount of things.
Well, but you could also use a break, you know?
No, the day-to-day that we were doing was crazy.
Yeah, it was a lot.
And between payroll and bills and.
Which was really pressing, yeah.
And transition. Since then, one a week, I'd rather do it, it's not hard for me, I can do one a week, I have the video if I need to, I put on one point five times, I keep notes while we're in the meeting. I'm really, one a week, it's, it's honestly easy for me to do it. The backlog was a little, has been a little bit of a thing to sort through, but one a week, I, I don't, believe me, I don't want to do it long term. But for now, I think it's just way simpler than getting, because I thought, believe me, I thought about people who have previously done it, and thought about reaching out X, Y, and Z. And then I thought, you know what, let's just do it, let's not rush anything.
Okay.
Let's just, I'm more than happy to do, one a week is easy, and then actually, there's not my edits to them. So it makes it that much easier.
Fair enough.
So if I just do it.
I'm not gonna argue.
If I do it one a week. It, it.
Thank you.
It keeps it simple, and then we don't need to worry about it, and it's so much easier for someone who kind of has a clue of what's going on than asking someone else.
It's really hard to come up to speed, it takes a long time to get Laurie to a point where she kind of.
So let's just do that, we're still sorting through the backlog, once we get the backlog sorted through.
And I'm still trying to figure out right now where our program means he can help with.
Yes.
And it's a sort of weird place right now with all this stuff going around, I mean, the hardest thing I'm dealing with right now is, like, where it is in the files, like, someone asked me for something, like, someone asked me for, uh, what'd they ask me for? I can't even remember, oh, Dennis asked me for something, yeah, oh, he asked me for the, um, he was looking for the, uh, the dash, the driver assisted, um, contract from last year, like, he, he asked me, is there a file of those things? I'm like, can't.
I guarantee you there is, but where is it?
I have no idea where is it, but I think there's a lot of stuff in there, so.
I have to say.
But I, I found some stuff on it, just on the computer, just in research.
Dash has been one of those things that, um, we have, like, put out, the procurement has been a little funny, just because not a lot of places do it.
Yeah.
And it's not been like a competitive bidding process, since I'm on the board, which is like.
A quid services or something.
We've been extending the same.
Yeah.
Because we're lucky to have anybody.
I like that thing, don't you?
It's.
I think it's really, you did it.
It did that like yesterday or something.
He did a hell of a job, I mean, that's amazing.
I know, he said it July, I was like, oh my god.
So, so I do have a few things.
Yeah, let's vote, let's do town administrator, how it'd be.
Yep.
So, um, I, uh, concerning the Conservation Commission and some of the stuff that I'm helping them with right now, I have phones called, a phone call scheduled tomorrow at one P M. Between, um, myself, Noel, Kim, and Jenny, I think that's how she says it, Merrill.
Yes.
Is a partner at, uh, at, um, Harrington Heath. There's that, uh, I did talk to John, I left a message with John.
And that's Ray Hume.
But that, that's about, that's about Hume, but specifically about Hume, not Lake Garfield.
Right.
So, um, at, at this point, um, having to do with the fact that, um, the Concom denied their, uh, their application at the time, and is all saying that they needed to do a third-party review. And so there's a lot of, there, this is the first, first time the Concom's ever used a third-party review, so we're just trying to make sure that all the ducks are.
Who suggested we do a third-party review?
They, it was their recommendation.
Hume?
Concom.
No, no, the Concom, uh, so I just want to correct that they didn't actually, um, reject it, they had to defer a decision because there was inadequate information.
Yeah.
So, the, the crux of the biscuit, if you haven't heard about this yet, is that they're, they're clearing, uh, over an acre, it would involve two, two hundred, it's, I can't remember, I may have.
Trees.
Two hundred and fifty-nine or two hundred and ninety-five, I keep two hundred and forty-two.
Well, that was not in a small diameter tree.
That's just the large diameter trees.
Those are large trees.
And the, they, they didn't initially have that, so the Concom had to require them to go survey it, what the kind of trees were, and when they came back again, like, she, it's, it's definitely part of the scenic mountain act issue, it's gonna be very exposed. Um, and the, the Concom is particularly concerned about not only the tree clearing, but runoff, and whether there's an adequate plan to cope with additional water that will be coming off there, and a bunch of other scenic mountain athlete things, so, um, they had the authority to ask for a third-party review, where the Concom chooses the reviewer and the applicant has to pay for it. Um, it's part of the scenic, scenic mountain act, but they've never had to require it. So they just want to consult with the council to make sure that they dot every eye, box everything, do everything correctly.
We also, just so you know, we might have run into a quorum issue.
Yeah.
Because open meeting law says quorum is a majority of total seats available. So Concom is technically seven seats, quorum's four.
Wait, we just discussed this.
I know, Susan, let me get through it.
Oh, god.
The Wetlands Protection Act apparently says quorum is a majority of the people appointed to fill those seats. So if you have two people appointed, quorum's two, if you have three people appointed, quorum's two. We have advice, I mean, in writing from town council that clearly says, in that case, Wetlands Protection Act overrules open meeting law, and we still fully believe that it does. There might be other mass general law that just simply says, con- a conservation commission is three to seven members. That isn't really an issue of quorum, it's an issue of what a conservation commission is. So, the dust, in my mind, hasn't all settled, but we, as far as I understand it, Wetland Protection Act quorum trumps open meeting law quorum. We had quorum as far as that's concerned, we just might not have had conservation commission as far as mass general law.
Of course, it matters.
Is concerned, I don't know.
Okay.
Don't quote me. We thought we had it resolved when Donna came back from vacation, and I said something about raising the number, we asked her, how do you raise? Or what were the number of seats from seven to five, and she drafted that language, and then she said, oh, you're saying you only have two commissioners? That doesn't really jive.
Do we now have three commissioners?
We have five.
We have five, okay.
But there was a meeting, at least one meeting where we had two, I think, I mean, one meetings where we had three.
Just two. Yeah. There was a meeting that actually had to do with Hume, where they met and there was only two.
Yeah, so we don't know.
But at this point, we have an appropriate number.
Yes.
So that's.
I'm just putting that on your radar, there might be fallout, I don't know.
Yeah.
Hopefully, Roger, when you're on the phone with Jenny tomorrow and Noel, just please run that by. Obviously, we have five, I just don't know if, if we need to do any cleanup, you can mention that our understanding is and has been that W. That the Wetlands Protection Act quorum requirement trumps open meeting law quorum requirement, we just don't know what else might be at play. Yes, the other question Susan, like you bring up is Wetlands Protection Act is not the only thing that Concom does.
Right, scenic, in this case, it looks like uh scenic mountain act may actually be the most relevant issue.
So.
Not that I don't think that there's wetlands involved, but.
Yeah, Alex, uh so um Noel did speak with Alex Glover, their lawyer, and she mentioned that in two thousand nineteen. The uh Concom made a decision about this.
About scenic mountain?
About, no, about camping sites, twelve camping sites. But it, well, they made a decision, they made a decision about um the.
Site plan.
Site plan, which I don't necessarily know if it was the same site plan or not, because I went back and looked at it through two thousand nineteen, and there actually was. Uh in June of two thousand nineteen, there was, there's a little paragraph in there about something that happened with Concom. But it mentions camping sites and not, not RVs, not recreational vehicle sites, and there's something else that it, that it. Didn't, that it mentioned that didn't make it sound like it was exactly the same, but it came across that the Concom was very much for it.
At the time.
At the time.
But it may not have been the same.
It may not have been the same plan, and that's why I asked of Noel, I said, are plans around, or is there anything around the back, she wasn't certain.
Well, that's before her time.
That was before, that was also before the lawsuit, right, because it was two thousand nineteen, the lawsuit happened after that.
I, I, what happened was. What likely happened was they took that site plan to the Concom and the planning board and pl- they shoot planning board.
So what happened is that, that decision that they made, two thousand nineteen expired.
Ah.
Yeah, the other thing that I understand in the meeting, they were talking about giving them the permit and all, but they leave it to twelve sites. And no more further uh screening, and they said no way. So you, what, this could be the beginning of a long trip.
Well, this is always was, the good news is this, is Concom's issue.
Next, next.
We just had to approve, do, do we have to formally approve council, or do they accuse, approve permission to go to county?
I told you.
Yeah, by general consent, we approved it.
Okay. Yes, um and I would say that that applies to any future need up for this case that she has to consult with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think we might have already kind of given them. Back when this first came out a few months ago, either the board or myself in the best interest of the town said, please consult town council.
Right.
About anything to do with this site plan, because obviously.
We want to dump it.
We want to dump it.
So I just wanted to reconfirm that that went forward and um.
Please, if you're dealing with.
Right, make sure to convey to Noel that she has set permission going forward on this case.
To contact Concom.
Council should, she does not need to ask for permission.
Okay, cool, um I, I reached out to John Field, left a message with the, with them, I haven't heard back yet, about extending the contract.
Except that, it's just a three-year contract.
Except it's just a three-year contract, just to make sure everybody knows, it's not an extension, it's just a three-year contract.
Yeah, and if they don't answer, if they don't pick up the phone.
Don't you have connections?
It, it, yeah, I guess I should probably shut up, I was gonna say something. You missed, you have two new conflicts.
Yeah, I know, I heard, I know, I don't talk as a ten, you won't be able to talk to anybody.
I just need you to reach out, it's just a reminder that your life is very simple.
I'll be on the slide board, but I can't participate.
Well.
I get worried with the relatives, I don't know a minute.
So, so my last thing is I did get a phone call from Karen Allen, she was looking for a uh, a spot, there's no like, there's no uh. Um extension for the select board, so she, because she was gonna leave a message.
What do you mean? On the phone?
Yeah, there's no extension, there's no select board extension, so I was.
Because we don't have a voicemail or a phone.
Right, right, so that's, I told her, I said, I could say, I could take the message to me. Essentially, she was calling up about Cronk Road, and that Cronk Road with all the work that's happening, is that Cronk Road is getting wider, a little bit wider, a little bit wider. Year after year, and that's becoming a little more dangerous for um people to walk, for the, ride bikes on the road. She had concerns about that and the.
Would it be less dangerous if the road is wider?
I don't know, that's what she said.
Yeah, but it's not greater.
So it's just, it's a dirt road, you know, so she, she, she feels that the, the road is encroaching on where people would walk and be safe. So the road is getting wider, it makes it harder for people to sort of walk along the edges of it, some parts, I think, much like how uh, I think. I was, it made, she sounded like, I haven't gone through to really look, but it sounded like it was some of the calls I was fielding about Bear Town Mountain before they started. Before they started to put all the rails and doing all the grading, you know, it was like, it's like a steep drop, and I think she's feeling that, it's getting a little steep. Parts of the road.
Yeah, I don't think it's a drop off, I think it's a.
I don't know, so I told her that I would convey the message to her, she has concerns about Cronk Road and its safety, and I said specifically down, uh towards. Um Sandersville Road, right, Sandersville Road.
Yeah.
I said specifically down there.
Is that what she said, where you take the left and you cross right?
She just said, I just said like on, on that end of the road, she said yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I said, I'll, I'll pass the information along to the select board, so let's see what's going on. And that's it.
I've been told by someone on Swan, well, Mickey. That uh she's happy with. I don't really know where I was going with that. She's very happy with what the highway department does.
I'll say on the.
She said they're putting in more, and a telephone pole that used to be on the side of the road is now kind of in the middle of the road, but the road works on that.
I know it's in the middle of the road, it might be, you know, close to the right.
They're doing a great job, and I, I went up uh Myron, they were, they were working at Myron the last two days, um one day, Friday, one day. But um, yeah, they're doing a great job.
And I, I think.
They have this whole new grading system, have you seen it? It's pretty cool, it's got the, it's like little, it's fingers, it kind of goes in, digs it up, they drill both ways, and then they turn the blade sideways. And they use, it's all wedged in, so they can like change those blades and like, Jim's like, change them in twelve minutes, and then they put the straight blades on and go back and flatten it all out.
And they can get a nice camera on the road to frame twelve.
In Lee, there's a telephone pole in the middle of the road, and on an intersection, if you drive between Lee and Socrates, the back way, called like Socrates Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh suburban internal medicine.
Yeah.
Devon Road, the intersection of Devon Road and Socrates Road, there's a, there's a telephone pole right in the middle.
Literally in the middle of the road, I wonder how often.
In the middle of the intersection.
I wonder how often that's Socrates.
But, but, but also Town Hill Road and Sandersfield, that isn't this way anymore, but they used to have one coming up the hill on Town Hill Road, just straight up in the middle.
I can't even, that's like asking for the pole to get taken out, or the truck, or whatever drove into it, or both.
Hoop Bay Road. Hoop Bay Road has one, one tree that's kind of like right there, like on the side of the road, it's like really.
Mount Hunger too, it has a lot of.
Those where it's like.
There's a tree, I, it's a really famous case, I, I think it's now family, they actually um. The tree became an official entity that owns its, its land, and it's like, it is in the middle of the road. And it's one of those big, um I forget what they call it, fly oaks, yeah, do you know what?
Petal action.
These are like, look a fly oak, they're insanely huge, and it's really old tree, they're amazing, so cool, but anyway, the town to protect it, because the people. Like a hundred fifty years ago, they, they declared the tree an entity, and, and like owns it, the trees supposedly owns its land, and then. The tree, I guess, spawned another tree, that one now is, and it needs to, so the two trees now kind of like, they can't be taken down. Ron has to go around them, which I just, I kind of love it, I'm like, I'm sure if it was here, everyone would have a fit.
The other thing is I'm waiting for a uh, an extension court for that.
Okay.
The sort of uh, on the U S B part, we have one, I can't.
You can maybe order it.
I can, I can.
Yeah.
I did know where it was.
It's probably attached somewhere.
I thought it was somewhere, but I just.
No worries.
One day you'll open a filing cabinet, you'll find it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then that will be where it was.
Yeah, here, we just put it over here somewhere.
Any other, was that the last step?
That's it, that's it.
Woo-hoo.
Okay.
Alright, I will look at these numbers and.
The motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's, oh, are we meeting next week? That seems for that.
Yeah, do we?
Yeah, I mean, I can do it, I can do it, uh my plan at this moment is to do it over here.
Um the reason to not meet next week, I guess, had been if there's a new board member, I don't know if I have to do all that stuff again.
You have to get.
I believe it, you don't, like.
You took the oath of office, you never left office, I don't think you need to, that's a question we've discussed before.
I know, but you can always just swing by Chris and wait then, um.
Um so that had been the reason to kind of not meet that week, but unfortunately, there's no one new on the board, so uh it's the same, it's.
Same old phases.
Same old phases, so.
That, that's good though.
But you get, is there anything that you think will actually be, I mean, the only thing would be just try to get four two out of the way, right?
Minutes. And four twenty-four, and four thirty.
Alright, okay.
Uh.
I'm okay with that.
Good thing is another meeting is another meeting of minutes.
Right.
Why don't uh.
Yeah, but what, you couldn't get faster minutes than me, four, four two was approved, or this was approved, or that was approved, that like, it doesn't get like a simpler minutes than that.
Um. What if we play it by ear and see if there's a sufficient agenda?
Something comes up between now and Friday?
Mm-hmm, okay, if anything comes up.
Well, if we do, two weeks at a last to get us all the minutes caught up.
What's that?
You know, if we don't do a meeting next.
If we don't meet.
Drafted, that's true.
Yeah, last, you get all the drafted, and then that's something that we go into the new year.
I mean, worst comes to worst, it's something that happens out of the uh, it's something that happens out of the town meeting, and then we would have it like on what, Wednesday? That's forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
Worst comes to worst.
Oh, yeah, we decided on, on Saturday, we needed to, yeah.
They'll have to get rejected.
So I, I, I don't think.
Oh, please do.
Is there anything necessarily pending that's coming up?
Um let's say look, I know I got emails, I pushed some things off that uh.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it's very possible we won't meet next week, let's say that.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I agree.
Um.
We've been had a stretch here.
Catch your words on that.
Yeah, I know.
Hang out with your uh, your damn.
I wanna fill this thing up with water.
Well, that's not the thing, you never know.
Oh.
Well, you know, you took your population, if you filled it.
Except, that was, I mean, it's stale, it's just a concept.
I think, I.
Yeah, they could make it to scale.